Thank you very much. I would like to give notice that we just had an executive session to discuss legal issues and real estate issues. On to the consent agenda. Is there any, oh, I have a first public participation, I'm sorry. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak now versus when individual agenda items come up? Sorry, seeing none. Let's move to the consent agenda. Is there an item that any member of the Board of Commissioners or the audience would like to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Larkin, and a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riley this time. All right, let's call a vote to pass the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, on to the business agenda. First item is item 3A, Resolution 2025-69, Preliminary slash Final Subdivision Plan for 101 Sproul Road. It's a subdivision of one lot into two lots with one lot having an existing residential dwelling. Mr. Canelia?
Evening, Nick Canelia representing the applicant on this. You have seen it at caucus previously. This, just to familiarize, Sproul Road here, little short extension of Quaker Lane here, Woodstone Lane in this area here. It's a two-lot subdivision. The applicant will be living at this home. It's a proposal to subdivide this piece off right here. The driveway will be coming in from Quaker Lane onto this parcel. It meets all the requirements as to setbacks and impervious coverage and lot area. There are three waivers requested. The first one is regarding the manmade features within 500 feet, which is commonly granted. The second, the second one, I noticed that the dedication of right-of-way on Sproul Road. Go ahead.
So, Sproul Road, it's a state highway. There is no plans right now for expansion. We did not get any word from the township of additional right-of-way that they may require for that. Thus, we have not offered any additional right-of-way.
And whether that's a waiver request or not, it's down here as a waiver request, so, you know, we will continue to request it. And the third waiver request was regarding the location of large trees. This lot, I assume, eventually will be sold and built upon at the time of applying for a grading permit. The trees will have to be located, and any trees being removed would have to be indicated on the plan as well for the grading permit. So that was the third waiver requested here.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any Commissioner questions or comments? No, seeing none. Any public participation? All right, I believe I did not get a motion on this, so could I get a motion to pass Resolution 2025-69? So moved by Commissioner Riley and a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Larkin. I saw no public participation. I'll ask again. Okay, let's call a vote on Resolution 2025-69. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 3B, Resolution 2025-70, A Preliminary slash Final Minor Subdivision Plan for 245 Willow Avenue, a subdivision of one lot into two lots, each with an existing residential dwelling. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Agnew and a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riley. Go ahead.
Okay. No, thank you. I'm John McDonald at 245 Willow. I apologize. I didn't think that I needed to bring the plan again since you had seen it previously, but essentially the...
We haven't.
Okay.
The public does not, but we do, so we'll see if anybody, I think everybody's okay with it.
Okay. So essentially, the gist is to return the previously consolidated lot back into the two lots that it was since its inception back in the 1920s. The, the appeal is, I believe, we can't meet the parking requirement to provide two parking spaces, as well as there is a minor impervious coverage that we exceed on the 245 side, which is an existing impervious. We're not increasing impervious on that side. But I do believe we've met all the other requirements that were posed in the letters.
There was something about contour lines, I remember. Did you go ahead and meet with that?
Well, because there was no grading, we requested a waiver not to provide the contour lines.
Yeah, I know, part, planning was fine with that, so.
Correct, that's correct.
Mr. Nortini, any issues?
No, Madam President. As the applicant has stated, this is basically a clean review letter, and engineering is no concern with the waivers requested.
Thank you. Any public participation on this? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote to pass Resolution 2025-70. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
All right. Item 3C is a caucus, so there will be no vote. A final land development plan on 695 Clyde Road. This is the Radnor Township School District's Ithyn Elementary School. Construction of a new school to replace existing school to be demolished and related modifications to the parking lots, driveways, and grounds. Hello, Mr. Falcone.
Hello, how are you? Thank you. David Falcone here on behalf of the applicant, the Radnor Township School District. As you noted, Commissioner, we are here for a caucus to discuss the final land development approval for the new Ithyn Elementary School. We were here in front of the board not too, too long ago for preliminary, and y'all were kind enough to grant it then, subject to several conditions, which thankfully, at this point, I believe, we've been able to meet those which we were able to meet to this point. I should note that we recently were in front of the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to not recommend our approval at this point because at that, at that time, we had not been able to address a few of the traffic items. Thankfully, your staff, which has been tremendous to this point, made time for us and reviewed our most recent submission and was able to even issue updated review letters. And those letters show that the open traffic items that were hanging in front of the Planning Commission have, have been resolved. So we are, we are happy to report that we have clean letters now for the Board of Commissioners as part of this plan, and we are remaining on schedule for this, for this building to get open for the kids. So I have both of my consultants here with me tonight, my civil engineer and my traffic, but I think probably the most important thing to do would be to confirm that we did, in fact, have a discussion with, with staff regarding traffic, and those open items have, have been addressed.
Mr. Nortini, do you want to be the spokesperson?
Yes, Madam President. So, Mr. Falcone is correct. At this point in time, the district has clean review letters. They're here before you for caucus. The intent would be to come on the 19th for final. Staff, engineering staff and consultants have no concern from a salvo standpoint with this project, right? They have the clean letters. Took us a while to get here, but we're here. So we want to see the school district move through.
Thank you very much. Commissioner questions, comments? We have lots of experts here. We've heard it before, so. See nothing. Any public participation? All right. You're going to have a nice quiet night for your caucus.
I should note, and I just, it definitely goes to note, Mr. Drummond and Ms. Nortini have been exceptional and have gone definitely above and beyond during this process for us, and have worked really well with our consultants and helped us get here. There is no chance we could have been to this point without their help and, and their guidance. So we are lucky as a township to have them, so.
I agree with the latter statement, and thank you very much for, for your kind words. And we'll see you again soon. No vote, caucus. Okay, item 3D, Ordinance 2025-03. This is an introduction of an ordinance of Radnor Township Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending the Radnor Township Code of Ordinances by revising Chapter 205, Park and Recreation Areas, Article 1, Section 205-4, Restricted Activities. Ordinance will outline specifically the current permissions of where dogs are permitted across the park system. Could I have a motion, please? So moved by Commissioner Riley and a second. Second, thank you, by Commissioner Abel. All right, Director Cohen.
Yes, thank you, President Myers. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this this evening as this has been an agenda topic of the Parks and Recreation Board that has been going on since October of 2020. Sir, for about almost five years now, we've been having a discussion. So I just wanted to show some slides tonight just to give a little bit of, a little bit of background and also really take an opportunity to not only thank the Parks and Recreation Board members for their years and time that they've spent on this topic. Some of them have actually graduated off of the Parks and Recreation Board since, and then also give an opportunity to thank a lot of the members of the public that have come out during that time. It has been a standing agenda topic that has been on all of our agendas, so we're looking at about 50 meetings, I think, that have taken place during that time. It originally came to us as a presentation by a previous Parks and Recreation Chair, Parks and Rec Board Chair, who had an infamous discussion on parks in the parks, which was a previous presentation that really just started to bring light to some concerns that were being seen, namely, in the Willows and Skunk Hollow Trails, and of course, in and around those areas, knowing that that's a high area for dogs being off-leash, and also just wanted to paint a picture on the current Township Codes ordinances that had been in place, as well as those relative to a lot of the surrounding townships, which she had presented in, in great detail. So where that had led us over the last few years, really, initial focus talking about the Willows and Skunk Hollow, which brought us to Ordinance 2024-01, which, as you'll recall, was ordained, adopted, of course, introduced and adopted in February of this, just this past year. And that required dogs to be on leash at the Skunk Hollow portion, of course, of the Willows and Skunk Hollows on leash Saturdays, Sundays, and then, of course, holidays that follow the Township holiday schedule from noon to dusk. And then also, within that ordinance was crafted to come back and take a review one year later at the direction and guidance of the Board of Commissioners, once that was adopted. So, and then, just for clarification, the Willows, it gave us an opportunity to reiterate the policy on the Willows portion of the property where dogs are not permitted at all. So again, one of those concerns really had to do with the mansion operations that have really been gearing up in the last several years with lots of events taking place at the facility, and then the concern of dogs coming into events, running into events, even running into the mansion, which was something that had been expressed, and we've had some issues with over the last couple of years. So once, Ordinance 2024 was adopted and became underway, the Parks and Recreation Board then started to review really all of the, all of the parks and the permissions, which would, had really been an on and off topic during that time. Most of the focus on the Willows and Skunk Hollow, some of the focus, of course, on some of the other areas like Harford, like Emlyn Towne, and Ditmar, to, to name a few. So if you take a look at the codes right now, you'll see this section, if you open up the codes of the Township ordinances, which can be found on the website, you will see a number of restricted activities, namely, of course, you'll see within this section, where it's really focused on dogs, it discusses pets running free. So under the current ordinance, pets may accompany their owners while under control unless specifically prohibited and posted by the township. So really, there really hasn't been a definition for under control, so that of which might be deemed under control by one owner, on or off a leash, really is a subjective experience, depending on the owner, depending on the dog, and had really been applicable to all of the parks in which the dogs are permitted. As you can see here, the, the only park that is discussed in the ordinance has been Skunk Hollow, namely, because it was just passed as an ordinance last February. So we have policies that have been in various locations in Township materials, so on the website and some of the policy details that we have, but nothing that really brought everything into the code, into the ordinance, where you could see the list of parks of where dogs are permitted, where they're not permitted, where they're permitted off-leash, et cetera. So the goal really has been to bring everything into one central location, to make it easy for everyone to find. This way, it becomes more enforceable to our law enforcement folks who oftentimes find themselves looking into this area, trying to find what the current policies are. Because given the magnitude of all the parks that we have, there's a lot of definitions, and there's a lot of parks. So, under the changes within the ordinance that you have in front of you this evening, so one of the changes is in terms of dogs accompanying their owners in the following list of parks. There's one change, so the list of parks where the dogs are permitted does not change with the exception of James C. Ditmar Park being added to that list where dogs would be permitted, as well as also denoting that there would be a physical leash that would be the definition of that control within the park grounds, and then especially within the parking lot of the parking area. And then for the health and safety of the park users, we also wanted to call out that the dogs would not be permitted on the athletic fields or in the playgrounds for any of those specific parks. So moving on through some of the additional areas within the ordinance, it would call out the two dog parks that we have specifically, that have been noted as Harford Park and Friends of Radnor Trails Park, where dogs can basically be off-leash throughout the park grounds. But we also wanted to codify that, and for safety purposes, really, that dogs should be on a physical leash while they're in the parking lot of those particular parks. Then once they get into the dog permitted areas of each of the parks, they could certainly be off-leash and under control based on whatever decision, whatever decision-making or definition fits, of course, the dog owner. And then, of course, Skunk Hollow, where we have obviously very specific policy in terms of the noon to dusk requirement on Saturdays, Sundays, and Township holidays. Again, this doesn't change from Ordinance 2024-01. That was passed last February, so that would stay in place. And then, of course, requiring the dogs to secure their, requiring the owners to secure their dogs on a physical leash in the parking lots. This way, when the vehicles pull up and the dogs typically, you know, kind of jumped out and ran towards the trail, we're just asking the dog owners to keep their dogs on a leash for safety purposes. Of course, with a lot of vehicular activity, you know, this definitely is something that is a good safety measure to take at those various locations. And then, of course, the, the parks where the dogs are prohibited at all times. Again, this isn't a list that has changed. This would stay the same as it has been for years and years, and of course, some of these parks that came to fruition and were developed in the mid 2000s and late 2000s, obviously, this has given an opportunity to codify that within the code and within the ordinance. And then one other addition that you would find within there is just with regards to service and/or emotional support dogs, just denoting that, you know, they are permitted, of course, in all of the parks across the park system, so long as each dog is under control by their owner at all times, by a harness, a leash, a leash or a tether, while in, while in the public spaces, of course. And this language is really just taken straight from the Americans with Disabilities Act language in terms of what they, of what they have written out. So if we look around, if we look at Radnor, you know, as of right now, the way the, so not under the proposed change, but under the way the, the ordinance reads right now, we would have, we still, we have currently today, we have 13 parks where dogs really can be permitted off-leash. Under the revision of the ordinance, we would have three. And then if you compare it to our local townships, you could see we'll still be in the, we'll still be in, we'll still be ahead of them by having three parks, where you see Lower Marion, of course, and Tridifern, you know, having their off-leash areas, and Haverford, those, those townships actually not only have the requirement of a registration, but there's a process of paying a fee annually to have those dogs permitted to be in those spaces. But you could see the number of off-leash parks is where you have off-leash areas, you know, certainly, there's not a lot of those if you look around to our local seven townships that, that are around us. So if we just take a look, the map on the left really shows where we are today. I called out Ditmar Park over there at the left, where I have a red box around it today that has been, you know, a, a park where the dogs are not permitted. They would now jump over to the other side, and, under the way the ordinance is written, giving us now 14 parks, of course, where dogs would be permitted, three, of course, off-leash. And ultimately, if the ordinance ends up passing, we move to adoption in June, which would be at the June 15th meeting, the way this would be carried out. We would come back and do a full look at all the parks and all the signage. We would plan on doing a marketing campaign to put the information out to the public so that they understand what the permissions are. That way, there's no confusion moving forward, and then, obviously, the, the help to our enforcement team to be able to move through the process then of, you know, carrying out the ordinance.
Thank you very much for that excellent summary. I did just want to make a couple of quick comments. One is the Ditmar change. I think when we looked at it, we all thought Ditmar was sort of on a level as Emlyn Towne, playing fields in the middle, a trail around the outside, Emlyn Towne allowing dogs on that circle trail, and Ditmar not seemed a little bit of a mismatch. The other thing is after discussions today, I think some of the language may need to be adjusted, and Mr. Rice is not here right this second, but that we, we do note owners walking these dogs in the ordinance, and I know we have a lot of non-owner dog walkers, friends of the dog, neighbors of the dog, I don't know, but that this ordinance should not apply to just the owners of the dogs. It should apply to whoever happens to be accompanying the dog in the park. I don't think it's language that changes the ordinance substantially. I think it could be crafted, and, and that's why, ah, here comes Mr. Rice. So I'm going to have to repeat myself. I think we could just craft a little bit of a different language for that, and thanks to Commissioner Larkin for pointing that out. Mr. Rice, question for you. We're on the dog ordinance, 2025-03. Pointed out to us was the fact that the way the ordinance reads is dog owners, and I had a little bit of concern that the dogs aren't always with their owners. Sometimes they're with professional dog walkers or with, you know, aunts and uncles or whatever. Pardon me?
In the definition?
In the definition of what?
Owners.
Yes, I know. That's, that's my concern.
No, no, in the definition, it really encompasses everybody, under Section 1A. Well, the word owner, as used in this article, shall be include any person have a right of proprietary ownership, blah, 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 blah.
I was actually going to make that note. That's on the Skunk Hollow version that came out. I think we should transfer that in.
Take that.
Yeah, we want to bring that back.
And transfer it into the current ordinance. This, the, the 2025-03, you're taking it from 2024-01. And I was saying, Mr. Rice, that that's not really a substantial change to the ordinance. Is that something we could do between introducing it now and when it would be adopted in June?
Yeah, let me, let me understand. You want to change owners to what, owners and handlers?
How is it written? Kathy, could you read out? Sorry.
So, it's, the ordinance to a board, mine, it says, microphone.
Need a mic.
Section 1, Chapter 115, Animals, Article 3, Section 115-7, Dogs at Large is hereby revised as follows, to read as follows, I'm sorry. A, it shall be unlawful for any owner of a dog, unlicensed or licensed, to permit such dog to run at large unaccompanied by the owner. The word owner, as used in this article, shall include any person having a right of proprietary ship, ownership in a dog, and, I need, and every person who keeps or harbors or regularly feeds a dog or has it in a person's care, and every person who permits a dog on or about any premises occupied by that person. I think that kind of takes in everybody, but, maybe I'm wrong.
Cross-reference 205.
I think it.
With that, okay.
Is that something that substantially changes this ordinance?
No, I mean, you're defining owner and what that means, so it's, it's in the other...
No, I just, it, it leaves open right now a window for you to say, I'm a dog walker, I'm not the owner.
Right.
By definition, so I don't have to listen to the ordinance.
Or pick up the waste.
Or pick up the waste, I suppose, yeah.
So I would either cross-reference that, or I would just put that into, I'd probably put it right into the 205 amendment.
I was going to say, I think it's, it says in a person's care, but.
Okay. And Commissioner Larkin, did you have any other comments of substance on this? I know you looked at it pretty carefully. No? Good, okay. All right. Commissioner, comments and questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Coats.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things I want to make sure are clear to everybody that's watching online. Tammy, if you could go back to the map, write the other one before this. Perfect, thank you. One thing for clarity's sake, because the previous policy was restricted to under control, we're not actually removing 10 parks that allowed off-leash access. We're actually clarifying what we mean by under control, which now gives us three distinct parks that have off-leash ordinances. I just want to be really clear, because if you read this a certain way, it could look like we're losing 10 parks, and I just want everybody to understand that that's not actually what's happening. We're actually codifying this so that it's actually very clear as to which parks allow off-leash versus which ones do not. Is that fair?
Yes. I think the purpose of this was just to demonstrate the amount of off-leash parks we'll still have compared to our neighbors.
Yeah, we still beat everybody else. Yeah, Radnor above all. I, I'm down for that. The, the other thing I want to, I want to clarify is, because now that this is an ordinance and codified the way it is, the beautiful thing is that if we do want to make changes, we can always introduce amendments and adjustments through the current process. So if there are things we want to make changes to over time, that is possible, correct?
It is, and then those would come before the, before the Board of Commissioners, of course, in order to do that.
I know it sounds like I'm asking dumb questions, but sometimes it's good just to, you know, I'm, I'm big animal pictures for people like me, right? So I, I just want to make, clarify for, at least people in my ward, right, that I've gotten questions around, that we can introduce adjustments or suggest that other parks should be moved to an off-leash park, or change times that things off-leash are available. We can bring these things to the board or to the parks for review and then potentially bring them up through the Board of Commissioners to look at if we deem that that's what the community is, is best for.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, that's terrific, because I have had several people comment on, on that side, the Ward 7 side, it would be nice to look at potentially having another dog park, either a cordoned-off area of Emlyn Towne or something, and we can always amend this later. Excellent. Other Commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Abel?
Thank you. And for everyone at home and in, in the audience, I know this is a sensitive topic for, for many, primarily those who own dogs. I happen to be a dog owner and have two dogs that I walk on a daily basis. You know, and I would have been fine leaving the previous, previous guidance untouched until we passed the ordinance last year with Skunk Hollow. And once we passed that ordinance and, and required the police department to enforce the, the new guidelines, my, my thoughts were we had to be consistent across the board. So we had to, so we had to take a look at the township comprehensively and put something in place that's consistent across the, the community. And speaking just for Ward 6, I'm, I'm happy with the way this has flushed out. I, I think it offers parks for, for everyone. So we've got several parks that will, will still prohibit dogs, and those are primarily parks where it's just playing fields, which I, I think is the, is the right call. You know, we don't want dogs running on areas where, where kids... You know, we don't want dogs running on areas where, where kids are playing, either before or after, or, and obviously during the, the athletic activities. We offer a park now, Dittmar, where, where it has a walking, a surface where dog owners can walk their dogs. And then we have, we have a park that offers the opportunity for dogs to run off-leash. So I, I think, you know, I think Tammy and, and staff and, and the board has crafted a, an ordinance that kind of hits everything for, for Ward 6, so I'm, I'm happy with it and will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Public participation. Any member of the public want to speak to this issue? And remember, it will be up for adoption in June, not in another week, because our next meeting is just a week away and we need more than that for advertisement.
Correct. So my name is Kim Cruz. I'm at, I'm a live on Garrett Avenue. I emailed all of you this morning. I do not support this current ordinance. I supported the one that was approved by the Parks and Rec Board that allowed dogs off-leash in all of the parks where they are currently allowed off-leash. I would support adding Dittmar to that, that, that list. It is certainly, I think it's a feasible thing to do. As for not having the dogs on the athletic fields, why? Why can't they be on there? I'm looking at Townell. Townell, I live directly across the street from there. It was used three hours today. Three hours! Why can't it be used by the community for the rest of the time? Why can't it be used? Okay? We live there. That is a community park. That community, that park, the, the width of that park takes up nine houses on Garrett Avenue, and it is the depth of three or four houses on Garrett Avenue. It is our community green space. We haven't had the right to actually run our dogs in this park for over 20 years. We came to these Parks and Rec Board meetings, we came to the BOC meetings, we got this right, and now you're trying to take it away from us. I do not appreciate that. I find it very disingenuous. Yes, in the future, you could amend it, or you can fix this now, so that way you don't have to do an amendment in the future. I respectfully ask that Emlyn Townell Park actually be moved to the section on the ordinance where dogs are allowed off-leash. I think it is the way the community is using it now. It, it gives the opportunity for the community to actually meet dogs. That park, the, the athletic fields are not used for athletic, the permitted, like softball, are not used 90% of the year. So 90% of the year, we can't run our dogs there, because the way this, actually 100% the way this ordinance is done, we can't run our dogs there. Why? Why? What are you protecting it from? There are foxes there, there are possums, there are raccoons, there are rats, there are all sorts of birds, there will be geese there, and they're not, and so, and they'll go on the field. So I'm asking, why? What is so special about these athletic fields? Yes, I understand that you don't want the, the dogs running in the park when the games are playing. Got it. So put in some hours when the dogs are not on the athletic fields. You know, 3 to 7, 3 to 7:30 during March to, to May, when the fields are actually in use. But for the rest of the year and the rest of the day, we should be allowed to be, actually have our dogs running on that field. We are in the community, we pay taxes, and we should be able to use that park to have our dogs run. So, as I said, I respectfully ask that you move Emlyn Townell to the dogs off-leash park.
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue, want to support Kim in this. I've lived in this neighborhood in my house for 42 years. I began to use the park for my dog, for Rosie the Jack, in 1998. At that time, no dogs were allowed in the park at all. And the police would show up in the Radnor House parking lot, and they would look at us, we would look at them, and we would take the dogs home. So, building community, we began to meet at 6:30 in the morning, when the cops didn't come to Emlyn Townell. Emlyn Townell is not a year-round park. Kim is absolutely correct. The girls' softball team use it end of March to the end of June. The rest of the time, it's ours. Now, we live in Ward 7, we have two parks. McCrone, no dogs at all. And now you want, you want in Emlyn Townell only on the path. Well, I will say to you, one of the issues is the path needs to be redone. When it rains, there are three areas where it's about an inch and a half pool of water. And you, you either walk through it or you walk around it. And if you walk around it, you're walking on the field. This is ridiculous. Allow us to use the only space, open space, we have. Now, I'm sure none of you come to Emlyn Townell on the off-hours, but what I've observed is Radnor House families are using Emlyn Townell, the field, in the fields, for picnics, for the kids playing, for them riding their bikes, their scooters, not on the walkway around because it's crumbling, but they're using the athletic fields. And if they have a dog, the dog's part of the family. When I had Rosie the Jack, who ran in the field at 6:30 in the morning, but the rest of the time she was on a leash, and no dogs were allowed at Emlyn Townell. She was a little dog, and I would intentionally walk her slowly on the leash while the kids were playing baseball. And I think I indoctrinated more little kids to not be afraid of the dogs. That would not have happened. It would not have acclimated the dogs to the kids and the kids to the dogs. I think you're wrong. We should be allowed to have our dogs on Emlyn Townell. They're not there on the fields when the games are being played. That's just common sense. I walk the field every day. I pick up the trash every day, which should not happen. There's only one dog whose owner does not pick up its poop, and I refuse. And it's a big dog, and it's about this far inside the path. So the dog is obviously on a leash, but I don't get there till 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning. And I'm not picking it up. The trash, yes, the poop, no. Please don't do this to Emlyn Townell and to our open space. We're a small neighborhood with narrow streets, and the sidewalks are narrow also, so it is not easy to walk your dog on a leash on the sidewalks. So the dogs come to Emlyn Townell. I think you're way off base on this one. Thank you.
Hello. John Engelhard, 70 Garrett Avenue. Similar points to what Sarah and Kim both said. I mean, we've been there, actually, May 30th will be 30 years. We've never had issues with the dogs in the park. I've never heard of any issues with dogs in the park. I like the under-control law, probably because my dog is under control, because I went to great lengths to train my dog and make sure he's under control without a leash. I see many, many dogs who are on leashes where the owner's being dragged, or the retractable leashes where the dog runs out to the end, it snaps it out of their hand. I mean, you know, it's just, I'm not advocating for another dog park, because honestly, those are disgusting, because no one cleans up after their dogs in those parks. I don't like to take my dog there, because dogs get sick a lot when they go there, because they're disgusting. But, you know, the map is interesting. I've lived in Radnor, like I said, almost 30 years, and I, it's never been Radnor's way to be like everybody else. Who cares what they do? Radnor also is a township, but it's also a group of neighborhoods, right? We have 13 parks. That's, that's a decent, well, the, I think that's the full number, I don't know how many it is. But Emlyn Townell is a neighborhood park. Yes, it's a township park, understand, but it's a neighborhood park. And those of us who are there, literally on a daily basis, usually twice a day, we know each other. We know people in Radnor House, we go sometimes to softball games, keep the dog outside the perimeter of the fields. The softball kids are always so cute. I mean, it's, it's, it's a whole interactive thing, they're just part of the community. And, you know, again, I, it doesn't feel democratic that the Parks and Rec has been discussing this for, I think, five years, and we've been to meetings, like we're here again today. And the only people that I've ever seen or heard at meetings are people who are opposed to this. And if this is a democratic process, why is this suddenly just being adopted when I think we're voting no by being here consistently? I don't see anyone here voting yes, except for the Commissioners. So it doesn't make any sense to me. I, I don't know of any reason why yes consistency. And also, Mr. Coats, to your point, I mean, yeah, theoretically down the road, it could be changed back, but let's be honest, how hard, how much harder is it to change something back than to just not change it? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. There's just not a problem at Emlyn Townell Field at all. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Seeing none. Any further comments or questions? Okay, I'm gonna call a vote on the introduction of ordinance.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Director Cohen, have you had any complaints about Emlyn Townell? Complaints that, you know, dogs are bothering people, attacking people in Emlyn Townell?
Well, I don't think there are any official police reports that that's what you're asking.
No, that's not what I meant to be.
But we also get, you know, emails and, you know, just anecdotal information that comes in from folks. So there, I mean, there have been a few. There's a lot of positives, there've been some negatives, but overall, it's not a recurring theme.
I just have one, one, one comment, and it was something that Sarah said. We're not making it that you have to just stay on the path, you can go outside of the path. You said you had to stay on the path, you don't have to stay on the path, you can go to the outside of the path, which is more open space. The last time I was there, and I've been going to that park 56 years, back when it was Converse and then Emlyn Townell, both for sports when I was a kid and then sports when my kids were younger. And the, the signs for Emlyn Townell are, they're still the same signs, and that's what we, we put up there, that the dogs are not supposed to be on the athletic fields. And seems like when they have hours, every time I'm there, there's somebody in the middle with their dog. And I know you commented the one guy doesn't pick up after the dog. I don't know if that was the dog or not. And they're in the center, and maybe they're in the center because they can't control the dog. But if you could control the dog, you could just go around the perimeter in that other section. But I, I think it's safer to have the dog on leash, especially if there's going to be kids around. Thanks.
Any further Commissioner comments or questions? No? Okay. I'll go back to calling a vote on the introduction of Ordinance 2025-03. And I just would like to remind people that this will not come back until June 16th, the Board of Commissioners meeting there. So, all in favor? It's unanimous. Next item is Item 3E, Consideration and Motion to Authorize John Rice to Attend the Zoning Hearing Board Meeting Regarding Villanova University's Appeal Number 3210. Could I have a motion, please? So moved by Commissioner Riley in a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Larkin. Commissioner Larkin, you want to start us off on this one?
Sure. So Villanova has proposed the construction of a welcome center on its main campus. They're going to need to go to the zoning hearing board for special exception relief in order to build the building that they have proposed, and they have indeed scheduled a special exception with our zoning hearing board. The township is a party to every zoning hearing, but we don't always send our solicitor or anyone on behalf of the township. Villanova is obviously doing a lot of stuff recently, and it is impacting a lot more of the township than it has in the past. And this welcome center seems like they're, they're pitching it as something that is going to be a component of the things that they are doing. And as a result, it makes sense to send the solicitor just to ensure that the application and its treatment complies with our zoning ordinance. So the request is to send the solicitor to ensure that the zoning relief that is requested does not exceed that to which Villanova is entitled.
Thank you. Very concise. Any Commissioner questions, comments?
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I find it interesting, and I think the Commissioners could, should know it, that at the time of the CCID and the building of the bridge, there was a lot of time and emphasis that they have a parking lot, which they weren't going to have, next to the bridge, so that the people could walk across the bridge and go to the church, because they didn't want them driving on campus. I find it curious that as far as I know, that's where the welcome center's gonna go. And I think that the Commissioners should look at that, and John Rice should look at that, because if it's true, it's denying a way for the parishioners to get across the bridge, to get on campus, to go to church. So it's more than just, I think it's important to remember. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Okay. Any staff comment on this? Seeing none. I'm going to call a vote on authorizing John Rice to attend the zoning hearing board regarding Villanova University's appeal, 3210, this coming Thursday. All in favor? And, and whatever future meetings would be necessary. All opposed? Okay. So we're 5 to 1. Commissioner Coats opposed. All right. Item 3F, Resolution 2025-62, authorizing the purchase of a pavilion and installation for the Fenimore Woods Improvements Project in the amount of $179,335, proposal pricing as per the Pennsylvania State Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing, and funded with the proceeds of the Hamilton Settlement. Could I have a motion, please? So moved by Commissioner Riley in a second. Second by Commissioner Abel. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Director Cohen, you want to start us out?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna ask Ian just to put up a, a rendering of the pavilion so you can see what it will look like. This is another step in the process of the improvements at Fenimore Woods. Ian, thank you for putting that up there. So the pavilion that you see on the screen is what's being referenced. It's approximately 30 by 50. It will take the same, same shape and the same footprint as what the previous one did before it was demolished back in October. It is a, it is a steel-based pavilion, so it'll be a little different than the wood structure that had been there previously, with the exception that the primary roof will be made of wood. It'll be a tongue and groove unit, and then over the top, there'll be a secondary roof that will be made of steel. The goal is to have a brown-on-brown color. Of course, the coloring isn't definite yet, we still have an opportunity to, to pick the differences that we may want there. The framework is all factory-coded, everything is designed here in the United States. I believe the, the factory is in Michigan, if I'm not mistaken, so we won't have, we won't have long delays. I believe the factory is in Michigan, if I'm not mistaken, so we won't have long delays or the worry of any increased prices, at least that we're aware of at this point. So the proposal will stand in place. I believe there is a approximate six to 10 possible week lead time on it, so we'd be looking towards fall at this point for installation. The installation, of course, will include the concrete pad, it'll include the setting of all the footers that will go along with it. The only thing we'll be responsible for is just delivering the site structure-free with nothing in the ground, which we worked on in October when we had Public Works perform the removal of the existing structure. I know there were some concrete footers and whatnot that had been buried underground that were all removed, and they'll be delivering the site to like a 2% slope so that it'll be ready for the unit when it comes in. So it'll include the installation, so within the price, it's the full purchase of the unit, the installation. We'll be able to define where we want electrical cutouts. We do intend to run electric that would come from the stable that will provide electric to the facility, unlike what was there previously. And of course, the water fountain and all that will be a separate item, in case you have some questions about that. But essentially, this is what it will look like. And the reason really for going for the steel is, there's a lot of reasons. Actually, there's longevity, there's the fact that this area doesn't get a lot of sunlight, so having the steel unit, it's easier to be cleaned, it can be lightly pressure washed, it can be cleaned up with soap and water, just, you know, to become free of like debris, the tree dander and all that. There's a lot of shade, as I had mentioned, so you get a lot of drippage that comes off the trees and moisture. If you recall, the previous unit had moss growing off of it, became very difficult to clean over time. And of course, longer warranty, longer lifeline of the unit, so obviously the decision to go with a metal-based unit that really, on the inside, will have a wood look, with the primary roof being a wood structure, seemed to really be a no-brainer on this. So we're excited about it. But the sooner the better, so the sooner we can get it and get it installed, we can get the unit back there and back to the generations of folks that use it for family reunions and picnics and birthday parties and all those great things. I know folks have been asking when the unit's going to be replaced, as they're excited to have it back. And of course, this will be our first summer in probably 40 years with not having it available since the previous one had been there for so long.
Thank you. I have two quick questions. One, you said wood look, so none of it is actual wood, it's all metal.
The primary roof on the inside will be, it'll be a wood...
Will be wood.
It will be wood.
That's what I thought you said, then I got confused.
Yep. It'll be factory-stained, so it will have a wood aspect to it.
Good.
Again, coloring and whatnot that we can choose, but want to keep that natural look to it.
Thank you. My other question, and I read in there somewhere in the packet, it was about gutters. Do we see the need for gutters on this project, or would they just be a problem?
So the gutters, so the way Polygon, the manufacturer, required the gutters from their manufacturing plant is that every single post would have one. So when I saw the initial rendering, it just looked, it just didn't look good, it looked too busy. And so we decided to go with the larger pads, so we'll have the drip ledge, which is very similar to the bathrooms that you'll see across the park system. So sometimes over time, they'll require a little bit of pressure washing to the surface, but definitely gives it a cleaner look.
No.
If we wanted to come back later, we could do gutters if we wanted to.
No, thanks for pointing out the drip ledge, because I was thinking erosion, but in fact, the gutters might actually give you whatever, eight specific erosion points rather than sort of a generalized thing. All right. Commissioner questions, comments?
Yeah. Commissioner Coats.
Thank you. I actually had the same question about gutters and then the drip ledge thing answered that one. Thank you. I did see there's the electrical cutouts. Is there going to be electric run to this, and will there be lights?
There will be electric ran to it, which is going to be, the origin's going to come off the stable. So that's the goal, is that the electric will come from the power source at the stable, and then, once the stable is hopefully renovated, you know, which is out to bid right now, as a matter of fact, just so everybody is aware, that bid comes back in mid-June, so we're, you know, excited about that again, being back out, hopefully with success this time. And we'll come down the pathway, the ADA pathway, of course, that will run alongside the parking lot, and we'll go to the pavilion. So the corner, the corner that you see on the right-hand side, most likely is where the power source will be ran. We do have the opportunity, if we want to run it to multiple posts, we can. So within the price, we have up to eight, we could put eight power sources within there if we wanted to. I don't really know that we'll have a need for that. But there was not a plan for lighting, so it would be electrical access, so that if somebody wanted to, you know, plug in music of some sort. I know we're planning to have pretty heavy power to some degree at the stable. Would be able to, you know, provide power for a band if we wanted to, or if we wanted to have some sort of like lighting that we would plug into there, we certainly could if we wanted to do that, if we wanted to have entertainment ultimately, you know, down the road. But, you know, there wasn't a plan for lighting. The lighting would be just an exterior light pack that would go on the stable once the stable's renovated.
And the park closes at dusk, so... Yeah. Got it. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Any public participation? Seeing none. I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2025-62. All in favor? Aye. This one's unanimous. All right, that concludes our business agenda. Let's go to reports of Board Liaisons. Anybody have anything? Commissioner Abel.
Yeah. Just so everyone knows, the Radnor Library is having their spring book sale from May 16th to the 18th. It starts on Friday, May 16th, from 5:00 to 8:30. Well, that's for members only. Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 to 4:30, and Sunday, May 18th, from 1:00 to 4:30. And if you wait till then, it's a 50% off sale. But that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Any new business? Any old business? All right, could I have a final public participation? No? No? All right, then a motion to adjourn. So moved by Commissioner Agnew, second. Second by Commissioner Riley, all in favor? Aye.